I'd like to call the Monday, July 17, 2017 Oakwood City Council Meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me at the pledge to the flag?
My pledge to the flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
May I have a roll call, please? Lori?
Mayor Duncan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Hilton.
Here.
And may I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Epley, who is on a family vacation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. Do we have a report on the minutes of our June 5 regular and work session and our June 19 work session? Mrs. Hilton?
Yes, Your Honor, I've reviewed the minutes from all three of those meetings and I've found them to be correct and complete, and therefore I move that they be adopted as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. Next, we have a new public safety officer in Oakwood, and I'm going to come down and give the oath of office, and her name is Casey Ballinger. And with Casey are her parents, Mike and Kim Ballinger, and her boyfriend Eric Fleming. So if you would all like to come down, and I will administer the oath of office, and then Alex, our chief, has a few comments to make about Casey. You guys want to come up here and be with her? Okay. All right, you got a good picture?
Great. So if you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me, "I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Ohio, and will obey the laws thereof, and that I will, in all respects, uphold and enforce the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of this city, and will faithfully discharge the duties of public safety officer upon which I am about to enter."
Congratulations.
Thanks.
I'll just say a very few brief words here about Casey. We're very blessed, this past hiring process, to have a number of very, very qualified, good candidates, but we did have one that obviously rose to the top of the pool, and she's with us here tonight. A little bit of a unique hire for us, the first time we've ever hired someone that came to us from the State Patrol, so she'll be bringing to us a little bit different perspective in law enforcement. They do things a little bit differently than everybody else, so we'll be seeing a little bit different introduction of some things. But also, prior to her experience with the Patrol, she was with Norfolk Fire Department as a fireman, paramedic, for four years, was it? Four and a half years, a city of about 250,000 people, so also bringing that experience, a very busy department, probably some things that don't see in a community this size, but she'll have experience with that as well. So, very glad to have you onboard.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, congratulations and welcome. Under status reports, I have a report on the state of Ohio budget, and I have a few prepared remarks, which I would like to read into the record. The Governor and the Ohio General Assembly passed their biennial budget last month. As predicted, they continue their assault on local governments across the great state of Ohio. The biennial Ohio budget was challenging because of lower-than-expected revenue. The Ohio small business deduction is the primary reason for this revenue shortfall. A qualified small business pays zero state income tax on the first $250,000 of income, and only 3% on any income over $250,000. Let me personalize this for you. My CPA firm has five equal partners. If we elected to be a qualified small business, and if we each had $250,000 of income, each of us would pay zero state income tax. Because we are not a qualified small business, the same income is subject to a 5% Ohio income tax. The General Assembly and the Governor chose to leave this loophole unchanged. While my small business, when my small business clients ask me why they do not owe any state income tax, I tell them the state believes you will hire more employees with your Ohio tax savings. They smile at me and put the money in their pockets. One Ohio legislator said he supported the small business deduction because one of his constituents created two jobs with this tax break. Over the objections of the Ohio House, the Ohio Senate, and the administration allowed inserted language into the budget to allow state collection of municipal and net profit business tax filings. This unconstitutional provision creates two different sets of laws for the same class of taxpayers, and further erodes local control and access to municipal revenue. The administration and the Ohio Senate inserted this provision into the budget despite thoughtful testimony in the Ohio House that indicated the Ohio business gateway in Columbus was woefully unprepared to deal with this change in the law. Ohio cities recently prevailed in the courts with another unconstitutional attack on local zoning ordinances passed in the lame duck session of the last General Assembly last fall. We will soon determine if a legal challenge to this new attack on the home rule provisions of the Ohio Constitution will prevail in the courts. If so, I encourage all municipalities to join us in our efforts to overturn this unconstitutional law. The budget also removes the throwback rule for municipalities. Without getting into the weeds, this provision reduces municipal income taxes for certain warehouse/distribution businesses by about 33%. In testimony to the General Assembly, numerous cities across Ohio indicated this provision would create six-figure revenue losses culminated by a $1.5 million estimated loss for the city of Akron. While this provision does not significantly affect Oakwood, other cities will inevitably raise their local income tax rates. If we continue to offer a 100% credit for taxes paid to other jurisdictions, this provision will also have a negative effect on Oakwood's tax base. In 2012, the General Assembly broke its 75-year covenant with local governments by taking for itself sales tax revenue previously reserved for cities, villages, townships, counties, and school districts. Although the total amount is insignificant to their $65 billion annual budget, it was about $50 billion annually with no significant Ohio population increase when I became your mayor eight years ago, the General Assembly and the Governor took about $60 million from the Local Government Fund and gave it to townships and for a state-controlled opioid addiction program. Local governments are on the front line of our opioid addiction problem. It defies belief the state would reduce local funding for this issue. Nor was one word said in Columbus about additional funding for enforcement of our existing laws. We are honored tonight to have Sheriff Phil Plummer address the City Council on the opioid addiction issues and other matters. Let me be clear, however, the Local Government Fund as we knew it is dead. In 1968, 2/3 of our state budget was for public safety and infrastructure. According to the Wall Street Journal, Ohio now spends 43% of its budget on Medicaid and only 14% for K-2 through 12 education. The average all other states spend on Medicaid is 28%. It was Governor Kasich who expanded Medicaid under Obamacare in 2013. At the time, the General Assembly predicted costs would exceed his estimates, and of course, they did. The General Assembly's current budget provides some common sense cost controls, which the Governor vetoed. If the General Assembly does not override his veto, our next Governor will have to decide on whether we want the state to provide for education to our children, and provide assistance to poor children and the disabled, or to provide free health care for able-bodied adults that are above the poverty level. Either way, local government support from the state of Ohio will not be in the mix. I will have some positive news to report, which I will be providing at the end of our meeting, and I thank you for your consideration. So without further to do, I would like to introduce Sheriff Phil Plummer. He joined the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office in 1988, where he began his career as a corrections officer assigned to the jail division. Sheriff Plummer has comprehensive knowledge and hands-on experience with all facets of managing the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Plummer is a native of Montgomery County. He graduated from Chaminade Julian High School, earned an associate's degree in criminal justice from the University of Toledo, and a bachelor's of science in management from the University of Phoenix. In 2003, he graduated from the FBI National Academy. Welcome, Sheriff Plummer, and we look forward to your report.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for inviting us today to share some of this bad information to you guys. Hopefully you'll find it very inspirational. We're doing great things here. It seems like we're swimming upstream, unfortunately. I never thought I'd stand here in front of you guys and say we're probably going to lose 800 people in our community due to this epidemic. We probably have over 2,500 medic runs logged in across the county over this. We've got a lot of bad press lately from CNN, MSNBC, Fox News, Time Magazine was here. The positive out of that is finally the federal government's starting to listen, and I think resources are going to be on their way to help us fight this epidemic. But like you guys, we've suffered some tremendous cuts, and we're feeling it every day. You know, the jail's full of people suffering from mental illnesses and addiction, and that population shouldn't be in the jail. 30% of the jails, people with mental illness, about 50% suffering due to this opioid epidemic. So the jail population's just a terrible population right now that we have to manage. So, like I said, hopefully helps on the way. We talked to Homeland Security Friday, and I told the guys, I said, you know, none of this stuff's being produced in America. None of it is. It's being shipped into us. We lost 59,000 Americans last year, and we're going to beat that again this year. When are we going to wake up and realize they're destroying us from the inside out? So, they said, "We're going to bring you to DC and you can testify on our behalf," so hopefully that'll happen. But we do need resources, because like I said, we're swimming upstream. So, I brought Chief Deputy Struck. He's going to go through the PowerPoint presentation with you guys, show it'll show the good, the bad, and the ugly. Like I said, with this national attention, we are leading the country in how we're fighting this epidemic, but it just doesn't seem like it's working. So, Chief Deputy Struck, come on up.
Thank you.
Hi, thanks for having me.
Welcome.
I'll get through this PowerPoint quick. I talk fast and loud, so if you have any questions, let me know. The first thing is, is kind of how did we get here? How did Dayton, Ohio, Montgomery County get to where we are? There's a lot of factors at play. One of them was the opioid-addicted population. So what happened was, a lot of prescriptions were being given out, people were becoming addicted, and then we started shutting down pill mills. Pill mills were where you could just go pay $50 to a doctor, $100 cash, you never saw anybody, and they wrote you a prescription, and you left. So it was nothing but a prescription shop. So we started shutting those down, and we did a real good job of them. So as that was going on, added safety measures were being placed on pills to where you couldn't smash oxys anymore and make powder and snort them and things like that. So there was all kinds of things going on. As that was going on, there was also a movement in this county, for some reason, to start legalizing marijuana everywhere. Well, as weed became legal, weed used to be the cartel's largest cash profit. Well, as that changed, they had to start looking for something new to make money on. Well, after we started closing out pill mills, they realized heroin was probably the way to go. So as all that started going, the cartels started bringing more and more heroin in, and that brought the cost down. We'll talk about purity. Purity started going higher, and just more and more Americans just started to become addicted and addicted to heroin/fentanyl, and now carfentanil and things like that. So that's how we got here. I mentioned the cartels. Couple years ago, cartels, we saw in movies and stuff. Cartels are alive and well in Montgomery County. They're at the hotels down here in the southern part, they're at the hotels in the northern part, and they also live within all of our communities. So, the main cartels here are the Familia Michoacan, and the main one that feeds Montgomery County is the Sinaloa Cartel. Those are the ones who bring the supply to Montgomery County. They work with the local gangs, they bring, the cartels bring the supply up, local gangs package it here, go out, disperse it, bring the money back to the cartels, money counters are there, and boom, back to Mexico they go. It's estimated that all the cartels together make $64 billion a year off of the United States, and Sinaloa Cartel makes $6 billion by itself. Now think about $64 billion a year, untaxed, on anything, just cash, that gives you a lot of research and development. So they are constantly thinking about how to make money off of the United States. Why did, what, Montgomery County? There's a lot of reasons. There's a lot of debate. One is the 70-75 connector. We all know that that's good for business and that you can be within the United States anywhere in a quick amount of time, so we have that. We also have several gangs in the area. We have 102 gangs in Montgomery County, but if you knock that down to actual real gangs, where you're seeing the violence on TV and seeing the shootings and all that, there's about five major gangs in Montgomery County that are actively working and causing a lot of problems, violence, and distributing all of the heroin and fentanyl around the area. Then we have local policy. Local policy in some areas said, you know what, we are an immigrant-friendly place, so we are not going to bother them, we're not going to ask for ID, we're not going to ask for their status. Well, you add all this stuff together, then it was kind of the perfect storm for how Montgomery County, the Dayton area, has taken the place of the Chicagos, Los Angeleses, Atlantas, things like that. We're a sore city. You can get a cap of heroin/fentanyl, carfentanil, in Montgomery County right now for about $6. If you go to Middletown, if you go to Richmond, Indiana, it's about $20. So that's why we're a sore city. People come here, they buy, they buy enough to do their fix, get their own fix, and then they take some back, sell it, so that they can do it all again tomorrow. Heroin, we kind of do ourselves a disservice nowadays. We keep talking about heroin, and it's, heroin is almost gone in this part of the country, at least in Montgomery County, Dayton. What it is now is become the fentanyls. But heroin is a pure powder, it's white. The darker it gets means the more it's cut with, they step on it, they say. Why do you do that? You do that to make more. So you go, you steal baby formula, you steal power, you do all kinds of stuff, you mix it together, and then you put it in caps. That way, if you have a pound, at the end, you end up with five pounds, and you go sell it and make a lot more money. So that's why the colors change and everything. But like I said, our task forces, we almost can't buy heroin at this point. If we try to buy or sell heroin, they tell us to get out, and the reason being is because the produced, the actual stuff that is manufactured and not natural, the fentanyls, they are so much more powerful that people don't even really like to mess with just heroin anymore. Heroin is about 100 times stronger than morphine. Fentanyl, I'm sure everybody's heard that word by now, fentanyl is 100 times more powerful than heroin. So obviously, if someone who is addicted, they're always chasing their first high. The first time they did heroin, it felt so good, they keep chasing that high. Well, as their tolerance levels grow, the stronger stuff becomes what they ask for. If they know that somebody, or three people, or four people actually passed away from a certain dealer, they will seek that dealer out, because they know that if that many people had overdoses and passed, then it must be, it must be really potent stuff, and they will seek that out. So we had heroin, it moved to fentanyl, and now we have carfentanil. Carfentanil, the DEA has said it's 10,000 more times stronger than morphine and 100 times stronger than fentanyl. It's an elephant tranquilizer. And now we have people putting this in their bodies, day in and day out. I'll tell you right now, we were with the coroner last Wednesday, they have identified 27 different strands of fentanyl in our county alone, that have been in people as they have done the autopsies and toxicology reports. So it's constant, constant manufacturing of stronger drugs that they're bringing to our area and giving to our loved ones and our kids. So, that's a picture, just to give people an idea, heroin, the dose, then you went to fentanyl, and then carfentanil. It only takes, if you imagine salt, if you dump a few grains of salt on your table or in your hand, that's all it takes of carfentanil to kill someone. That's how potent it is. So, in Montgomery County, the sheriff has mentioned how bad it's getting and the amount of deaths we have. In 2016, we had 1,705 dispatches for overdose calls for opiates. And when I say that, they are scrubbed data, meaning one by one, they went through and found out that it was either for a prescription opiate or fentanyl, heroin, something like that. That is without data from two agencies. We are already up, as of July 2nd, we were at 2,414 dispatches for overdoses. So, the number's climbing. We will tell you right now, the city of Dayton told us Thursday that their EMS, Dayton Fire, expects to hit 4,000 runs for medics for overdose calls in 2017. That affects everyone because of mutual aid, things like that. We all know how that works. If Dayton has to, is handling overdoses, Kettering comes in to handle other calls, Oakwood may have to go to Kettering. It's just a big wheel that keeps spinning to keep people's safety, to make sure everybody's safe. So, in 2015, everybody was outraged, because we had hit 259 actual deaths from an opioid or heroin/fentanyl. 16, we hit 349, and as of July 13th, Public Health put out today that we're at 404 deaths already. So yeah, what does that mean? That means that we will probably go over 800 this year. So everybody says, "Why do you keep talking about it? Why do you keep harping about it? And crack cocaine was out there, nobody put this much effort, people didn't call it diseases, they said you was an addict." The difference is deaths. So if you look at how much we've grown in three years, if the trend continues, we are not far away from a couple thousand a year, just in our county, dying. And there is no showing at this point of it slowing down. We keep kind of waiting, and I hate to say that, because it seems kind of heartless to say, but we do, we keep kind of waiting for a slowdown, thinking that maybe that most of the addicts are either passing because of overdoses or other health problems, because this just destroys your body from within, but there's no sign of it slowing down. So that is a very scary part about this, and that's why I think so many people were involved. So combating the problem, there's a lot of things going on. The sheriff said it. We got some public exposure, we went nationwide on several TV shows, several newspapers, articles. But to try to get the resources we need, it's almost necessary. So what we do is, we talked about, hey, you know, this is a problem, but here's what we're doing, and we would like to have more resources to do it. So some of the things we're doing, we have a RANGE Task Force. RANGE Task Force is a regional task force made up of agencies all over the county, and if you think about the normal task forces that you watch on TV or in the movies, to where when you see them on TV, they wear the mask so nobody sees their faces, they go into people's living rooms and get thrown on their knees, and stripped down, and make sure you're not a cop, and they do long-term investigations. That's this group. They go in, they use confidential informants, they may do it themselves, they go with the CI's, but that's what they're doing. They're trying to put the mid-level to high-level dealer in jail for a long time. Their main goal is not taking money, is not taking drugs. They are trying to put the people who are bringing it here, who are killing our kids, who are killing our loved ones, in jail for a long, long time. That's what they do. Their stats, when you look at their stats, don't seem that impressive. Once again, they're out to put bad guys in jail. So you look at about 285,000 seized, the big thing there is the operations, 367 operations in 2016, because they're always out serving warrants, trying to put people in jail. Now, the RANGE Task Force is kind of a standard throughout the country of a task force. RANGE was doing good work, but the numbers kept growing and growing and growing, and this is when we set 259 people dead. So we wanted to do something else. So there was a trend, there was about two task forces in the country called bulk smuggling, bulk currency smuggling task forces. So I said that RANGE wasn't after your money, or your houses, or your cars. Bulk is. We want every dime the Sinaloa Cartel makes in Montgomery County. So without getting into how it works, we have task force officers that do nothing but target the money counters. Remember I said that the trota comes in, it disperses through the local gangs, the gangs bring the money back to a money counter? We want that guy. Why? Because we want the Sinaloa Cartel to say, "Get out of Montgomery County, they're costing us money. They're taking our dope, they're costing us money." If you look at the difference there, $5.2 million seized. In 2017, since January 1st, we have taken 73 pounds of fentanyl off the street. Remember the slide with the couple grains that look like salt? Now imagine the death rate of 73 pounds that bulk has taken off the street. So that is what they do. While we're all enjoying holidays, you're out on the weekend, they're not. They're hustling hotels, they're in postal service, they're in UPS, and they're on highways trying to get this dope from coming and killing our loved ones. We've taken $35 million so far, valued street level of dope, off of Montgomery County streets. Directed patrols, data's it. Data's the answer. We have to know where this is at. So we have a Criminal Intelligence Center. That Criminal Intelligence Center, every morning produces a list that says, "Here's where the overdoses were, here's where all the citizens' complaints were the last two days, here's where the calls for service were." So they put that together, they come up with heat maps, they come up with certain addresses, hey, just so you know, there were 30 calls, you know, they do all that. Then they give it to deputies and officers who work together, and they go out and they hit them. These are the people you want, if you have somebody living next to you that you believe is selling. You don't want them living next to you, you want this group to come in, and they're quick hitters. They're just after the people selling on the street. So naloxone and Narcan. Oakwood obviously is a little different, because you are fire EMS and law enforcement. So you guys were already above the rest of us when it came to naloxone and Narcan. This is new to us, as far as just law enforcement agencies. So we've already used about 600 kits in 2017. It's growing, more and more agencies each day are coming onboard, and once again, very, very big issue, it's controversial. Half people love that you're giving Narcan out as law enforcement, half the people think you're wasting tax money and it's not our job, so it's a controversial issue, although we believe we're doing the right thing. Narcan saves lives, and the goal is just to hope that that time is when the person decides to go get help. So in 2012, the sheriff said, "You know what? I'm really sick of having people ask us, 'What can I do?'" We would go on calls. "My husband's laying on the ground, my kid's getting bloated up in the medic, what can I do? Where can I take them?" And our answer was, "I don't know. Try looking on the internet tomorrow morning for a number." So we developed the Drug-Free Coalition. That Drug-Free Coalition is very active and remains very active. They've done some great things, I'll talk about real quick. The first thing they did was the front door. We really couldn't believe, as we kept getting deeper and deeper into this, when somebody would call for help and say, "Hey, I need to get my son, my loved one, my daughter treatment," that people would say, "Okay, in about eight weeks, we can get them something." So what we did is, we worked with the city of Dayton Police Department, the Eastway, or I'm sorry, East End Community Center, Cornerstone Incorporated, and Cornerstone agreed to become a front door for us. So what that means is, if you belong, if you're part of Huber Heights Police Department, Riverside Sheriff's Office of Dayton, and Vandelia, you now have somewhere where you can take someone who asks for can take someone who asks for help. So, if we get on a call, and there is somebody there that says, "You're right, I need help, I'm ready for help now," we load them up into a cruiser, and we drive them to one of three treatment centers. We go in, sign them in, and leave. Our numbers are extraordinarily successful right now. As of right now, we have about a sixty-two percent success rate, which in the world of treatment is very good. So, that's something that we haven't been able to debunk, but it gives law enforcement a place that we can actually take people, and also Dayton Fire is now coming on board too with, with that, that notion. But being able to actually take somebody who needs help somewhere, and not, them not being told six weeks from now, "We'll find you something," is a big help. So, the GROW Project, the GROW Project works right with the front door. So, what happens is, within the Montgomery County, we respond to overdose calls. And I say "we," there are teams throughout the entire county. There are teams in the city of Dayton, Riverside, Huber Heights, Vandelia, the Sheriff's Office, we all have these teams. So, what happens, within seven days of an overdose at a residence, we will go to that area, or we will go to that house, knock on the door, try to get that person to talk to us. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to get them all the information they need to try to get to treatment, and once again, if they say, "You're right," then we can turn around and take them straight to the front door. We are extremely happy with the results of the GROW program also. That is why GROW programs are popping up all over. I, I should mention Miami'sburg, they were one of the first communities to jump on board with us when we did this. So, the GROW, GROW teams, they're out working every day, going door-to-door, trying to get people into treatment, and, and it appears to be working. We do law enforcement blitzes. That is, out of twenty-nine law enforcement agencies in Montgomery County, about twenty-two of them belong to our Drug-Free Coalition. And what it does is, we use data, once again, they develop houses, they develop areas, speedways, Krogers, wherever people are selling and buying, and we bring in resources from all over the county. So, what happens is, let's say Butler Township, the Miller Lane area says, "You know what? We need to have a blitz, we need as many resources as we can." We bring in twenty-two agencies. The last blitz, we had sixty-two marked units, we had thirty-seven unmarked units, we had two planes in the air, we have federal partners with us, and what it is, it's a blitz. You use data and you go after guns and drugs. If there's no drugs, drugs or guns in the car, you give the person you stopped an information sheet on the danger of opiates, you, you tell them thank you, and you send them on your way, and you off to the next one. We have done these operations now many, many, many times. We've not had one citizen's complaint, all we have is praise. When they see a Miami'sburg police car in the middle of Huber Heights stopping people, the, the community is very happy that, that people are at least trying, and law enforcement's trying. So, the blitzes are working well. The heat team, if we can, with a, let's say, a, a task force with Dayton, the Sheriff's Office, the Drug Enforcement Administration, and the, the federal prosecutors, what they do is, they try to indict people who sold heroin or fentanyl to someone who had died or at least serious physical harm, and they try to put them in jail. Prescription drug drop-offs, we harp and harp on this. The amount of money that prescriptions narcotics is worth is crazy. If you have a forty-milligram of oxy, it's worth five dollars a milligram on the street. Get the drugs out of the house. You may think, I have two teenage boys, we were just talking about it, I have a seventeen-year-old and a fifteen-year-old, I like to think they won't do anything wrong. Five dollars a milligram, if we have ninety, forties in the house, think of how much that's worth. Think about their friends coming over, think about all that stuff. So, we harp and harp, get the drugs out of your house, don't use them, you know, if you're not using them, get them out, take them to your local agencies and get them out. So, we, we really want that. That is a quick, down-to-earth, trying to let you know what's going on, we'll be glad to answer any questions you got.
Thank you very much for that report, that was eye-opening and sobering. Does council have any questions for the sheriff and the deputy?
I do, something I thought while they were talking. What's the support level from the judges as far as getting warrants and then follow-up? And in your opinion, are penalties strong enough for the dealers and, you know?
Could you, and could you come up to the mic so the folks that are watching it all? This will probably be the, the highest-rated Oakwood City Council meeting of all time.
Good question, the support from the judges, most of them are on board, most of them are tired of seeing the same addicts in their courtroom, the same people we deal with all the time, so most of them are on board. A lot of them are steering more towards treatment, you know, medicated assistance treatment, because, you know, the old saying is, "You can't arrest your way out of this, you eventually got to treat your way out of it," so they're pretty good.
Now, those are for users, though.
Yeah, users, all of them. The dealers, I'd like to see a little more pressure on spanking the dealers, we, we have to draw the line in the sand and spank the dealers. So, we're in constant communication with the judges about dealers, they got to go, you know. We have some sympathy for the users, you know, it's a choice to put the needle in your arm, but once you take the choice, I think it actually takes over your brain, and we want to get you treatment. Something Rob talked about, the Narcan issue, that is costing big money, as we all know, and our record was twenty-six doses on one patient, we just broke that with thirty-two the other day. So, as they're throwing these stronger and stronger synthetics at us, you know, like I told the federal government, our Narcan ain't going to work someday. You know, we're in trouble. That's a lot of Narcan on one person, and thirty-five percent of the people use Narcan, they get up and walk off, so we can do it again tomorrow. So, Narcan's a Band-Aid, and I don't know how much longer it's going to last with this carfentanil.
And, and who is paying for Narcan?
Uh, we're getting it from Adamus, State Adamus, they actually have a grant.
All right.
Yes, I think they bought us a hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars worth of Narcan so far. Your medics get it from the hospitals and our medic bags. That, that's another problem we have, the medic comes out and uses Narcan, if the patient gets up and walks off, the medic's got to go back to the hospital and get a new bag. Well, you know, if all of our medics are tied up on overdoses, when your tax-paying grandma has a heart attack, she's waiting for services. So, that's, that's the big reason we're trying to push to get this thing resolved. Us, the same people that get in jail all the time, that's a revolving door. We arrest them, they get kicked out. We rearrest them, they get kicked out. They're overdosing in the jail, you know, the women are sneaking the stuff in places we can't search legally, and they're overdosing in the jail. So, this is a problem for us. Any other questions?
I have one. So, once an addict goes through the front door to the treatment center, what, what happens at the treatment center? Do, do they move in? Is it counseling? Is it?
Mostly outpatient, I think we only have eleven inpatient treatment beds, which we lack, that also, so a lot of it's outpatient treatment. Vivitrol, if you guys are familiar with Vivitrol, it blocks opiates for thirty days. So, it's a fourteen-hundred-dollar shot, we tried to get them that shot, which Medicaid pays for. So, we tried to get them on that shot, so we had thirty days that they won't overdose, logically, to get them into treatment, so.
Thank you.
It's interesting, we've learned a lot with this epidemic.
Oh, I'll bet you, I'll bet you have. And we, I mean, other questions?
I had one. Can you talk about what kind of traffic accidents you've seen as a, as a result of this? I mean, everybody thinks to themselves, "Well, depending on my community, this might not be a big deal for me, but, you know, if you're driving anywhere, there's, these folks are out there."
Yeah, that's another scary thing. State Patrol came on TV last night talking about it, we've had plenty of fatalities where they actually had the needle in their arm while they were driving. As soon as they, it's like us, we get up in the morning, we want to have a cup of coffee, they got to have a shot of heroin immediately, so they go get it, and they got to shoot it up, and they cannot wait to get home. So, it's happening in a lot of bathrooms, they stop off at, you know, Speedway gas stations, they hit the bathrooms, McDonald's. A lot of people dying are also going home and dying in their bathrooms. So, it's the single user, because we read every death, every death report, the single user that's sneaking in his bathroom, shooting up, he's dead. You know, the buddy system, usually somebody calls, cleans up the mess, and they get them some help, but the single users are just flopping left and right. When we see carfentanil, you know, we'll have a spike of overdoses. Last night, we had thirteen overdoses. You see a spike of carfentanil, you have twenty-six overdoses in a twenty-four-hour period, you know, so we track that every day. It's pretty amazing.
So, just to clarify, heroin is what we're calling the base drug. This is for conversation purposes only. So, heroin's the base drug, fentanyl is a stronger version, it's still a heroin?
It's a synthetic, it's a synthetic heroin, yeah.
So, then, carfentanil is just a stronger ver, another synthetic, stronger version of fentanyl?
Yeah, so fifty percent of this is coming in the US Postal? We have one postal inspector, and they're down in Kentucky, so we need more help there, you know, so it's, you, you can get on the dark web and order this from China, they'll melt to your house. So, how do you police that?
But, but fentanyl and carfentanil are considered heroin, but just, they're synthetic versions?
Yeah, synthetic version.
A fair way to say it? Okay, thank you.
Yep, made in super labs in Mexico and China. So, they're sending heroin back, they're tired of heroin, so they went from pills to heroin, now to the synthetics.
Does, does the US Postal Service have technology to detect fentanyl and carfentanil that's coming through the mail?
No, no, DEA's starting to work postal services, and they see a package from China, they just cut it open and check it out.
I see.
So, that's our, that's our next wave. So, we're working, trying to work postal, UPS, FedEx, but, you know, I've got, I've got five guys that took over that five million off the street, working hotels, we just don't have the people. Eventually, as a community, we're all going to start pitching in bodies on these task forces and taking a real swing at this, because they're just not helping out.
So, the obvious solution of literally finding bodies to go help the postal service is not an option because no one's going to pay for it?
Right, right, I mean.
We, since the, you said that the federal government's getting involved now, I mean, is that an approach that literally, I hate to state the obvious, but you could literally say to someone who can provide funding that we need more, can you go to the postal service and say, "How about, let's focus on this area, look at our problem here," because it is so much, I mean, I've heard all the reports, how much our problem is worse than others, you know, as far as our county, we've all seen those numbers. It seems like an easy fix, what's the problem with us approaching the postal service and literally talking to them about that? Is there a problem?
It's not a problem, as I said, I talked to Homeland Security, which is one of our best partners, and this is a Homeland Security issue, so they're going to send a few more agents into Dayton, trying to get the FBI to send some in, DEA to send some, you know, if we're ground zero, which we are, send help.
Right, right.
Everybody talks about seventy and seventy-five. Send help, right?
Right.
And we're, we're swimming upstream. But we'd love, you guys put a guy on a task force for a year, I mean, everybody's stretched thin, but we got to work on this together, and it, it's the ancillaries, there's people dying in car crashes because of this, you know, they're going to be driving through Oakwood, heading back to Kettering or wherever they come from. This is something we all have to work together on, and, you know, unfortunately, this political town, that's a friggin' battle for us. Politics gets in the way of everything, and it's an uphill battle, but I think we can, we can do a better job with this, we all work together.
Hey, well, thank you very much, Sheriff, for coming, and.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
And we really appreciate this, and I'm sure that's something that we're going to have to be working with through the Mayor's and Managers Group, and just trying to make this, again, it's more, it's much education, I mean, I thought like I knew a lot about this issue, but you guys really opened up my eyes tonight, so we appreciate it, and thank you, deputy, we appreciate it.
Thanks for having us out.
All right, thank you. This is the visitor section of our meeting tonight, if there's anyone else that wishes to come up and address counsel, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, and welcome.
Hi, I'm Sharon Edwards, and I live at three forty-four Spirea, and so I have two things now, I only came with one, is, do we have a drug pill drop-off in Oakwood?
Good question.
We don't at the moment, but we will soon, we're, we're engaged right now.
Because we have a lot of elderly people, and I know my mom just recently passed away, and she had twenty-nine prescription medications, and people kept jokingly saying, "Don't get rid of it," and it's like, "Uh, yeah." So, I think that would be a good thing that we can do, is to educate, plus if people know that we're really active at getting the drugs out of the house, then maybe we'll be less of a target for break-ins, too.
The last few years, we've done a, a once-a-year program down at the Public Works Center for that.
I think we need something available.
And we are.
Because with my mom, I kept finding more, and my dad'd be like, "Oh, well, we have this," and I'm like, "Are you kidding?" So, it's about protecting our elderly, you know?
It's in the works, I actually dropped off pills at one of the Dayton local.
Yeah, I've been going to the Beaver Creek Police Department.
I did that, and literally the next day, I came back and talked to our city manager about this, and he's been working on it. It's not as easy as you're describing.
Do you have an idea on when, how, are we a couple months away?
We're probably a couple of months away from that, but I would also say that if somebody has a large quantity or whatever, we've always taken them here, then we can make arrangements to run them over.
When I had called, they said, "Go to Kettering." So, I mean, I, you know.
Right, I'm glad you asked the question, because we're right in the process of developing this, and in fact.
Well, I think education of our community will be really important, and also sending that out to the larger community that we don't keep pills in our houses, you know, if, you know, so. So, the second thing is, the Oakwood Police Department's been doing a great job monitoring the streets with the new construction going on. You're familiar with the three-hundred block of Spirea, there's no, I'm between Hathaway and Delane, and so there's no sidewalks, and we're seeing at least three times more traffic at higher speeds going through there. The police department, I have been seeing them, but there's no way for them to be there all the time. In the eleven-hundred block of Delane, there are six children under the age of eight, and there's no sidewalks. We need at least sidewalks through there. I, you know, you can't, I know we can't put a police officer down there all the time, it's going to be something that we're going to have to manage, and maybe it'll be better when the street is done, but I'm really concerned that someone's going to get hit, because these kids, they're good kids, but they're kids, and they're not always obedient, and they don't want to stay in their yard, and I just feel like if we can maybe put speed bumps, definitely sidewalks, I mean, this is a walking community, and Schroyer's got sidewalks, we need sidewalks in these blocks of Hathaway and Delane that do not have sidewalks. Now, the one part of Delane, you know, does have it, when it turns into Acorn, it does have sidewalks there, but the major dog drop-off is right there at the triangle of Acorn/Spirea, so I'm walking a dog, I'm having to walk around cars that are parked on the street, and it, it's just going to be a safety concern. I mean, I'm, I'm forty-nine, I'm not worried about, you know, I'm being careful, but not some kid that's not paying attention. I've had kids dart out between those cars, driving, so I just feel like it's a real hazard, especially what people are frustrated driving Schroyer, and they're going to be, I mean, it's going to be part of the process, so.
All right, thank you very much.
So, is any of this that I'm saying a possibility, or?
Do you want to address that, or?
I mean, I know it's all many, and I know it's all tight.
Right, I, I guess your, your main message on the sidewalks is, on Delane and Hathaway, on the northern end, it kind of peters out, there are, yeah, and, you know, there's, there's two parts to that, one, to putting sidewalks in, one is just the cost of it, but the other part is, you know, taking the property from folks there. Now, the right-of-way, we'd have to double-check it, but I believe the public right-of-way is wide enough in those locations, but the folks that have lived there have never had a sidewalk, and so they, they believe their yard basically goes out to the street. And so, if you come in there now and, you know, build a five-foot-wide sidewalk with a two- or three-foot-wide tree lawn, you know, you're six or eight, eight or nine feet up into the, what people perceive as their yards, so that's where it gets complicated.
So, do I need to maybe work on getting a petition to see how interested people are in this, for their, I mean, it's for their protection? I mean, I know these neighbors, and I didn't want to ask them, "Hey, come bring your kids to the student, or the city council meeting," but I know they're concerned, so.
I think it's probably something that we just need to take a look at.
We can.
Size up in terms of the scope of what we're talking about.
What, what would normally happen, if, if you had all of the neighbors on Hathaway that said, "We want to make a sidewalk from Spirea down to Patterson on the west side," you know, you'd have to get a petition, and then, you know, what would normally happen, the city would maybe build that for you, but it'd be an assessment on your property tax value, so it would essentially be additional cost.
It's going to cost them money to do it.
Yeah, it would cost them money.
Well, and I know for the family in the eleven-hundred block of Delane, they would be all for it, because three of the four, you know, families on that particular block have kids, so they're very interested in it.
Right.
Okay, and I want to be safely, like, walking my dog and not.
Do you want to, do you want to address a little bit about what you're doing with additional enforcement, because the, the Public Safety Department has created a plan there in the middle of enforcing it?
We have sent them out there, but, you know, they can't.
You've seen the, the speed board out there?
Um, I saw that on Hathaway, I haven't seen on Delane, but it doesn't mean that I haven't gone, I just, you know, you can't see it be out there all the time, and I'm trying to avoid Schroyer, so. Anyway, thank you, guys, I appreciate you.
Thank you very much for your comments, we appreciate you coming. Anyone else that wishes to address counsel at this time? This would be your time to come and speak to counsel. All right, well then, we will go to our legislation, the first item we have is an ordinance to appropriate money for Schenk Park and our City Municipal Court Computer System, Vice Mayor Byington.
Yes, Your Honor, this is, as you mentioned, an ordinance to amend Section One of two thousand and seventeen Original Appropriation Ordinance Number forty-eight thirty-two to provide for the appropriations of, number one, an additional amount of forty thousand to be expended from the Court Computerization Fund for the purpose of replacing and upgrading the case management system for the Oakwood Municipal Court, and two, an additional amount of fifty thousand to be expended for the Capital Improvement Fund for the purpose of improving real estate property at the corner of Oakwood and Schenk Avenue for use as a public pocket park. Let's see, this is a supplemental appropriation ordinance that is necessary to address two capital projects. Major grants were received to offset most of these additional expenses. The first is a complete replacement and upgrade of the Oakwood Municipal Court's Case Management System, or the CMS, and the second is for improvement to a pocket park at the corner of Oakwood and Schenk Avenue. When council adopted its two thousand and seventeen budget last December, we included an appropriation of a hundred thousand dollars for the Court CMS project. This is an extensive project that includes the installation of new computer hardware and software, IT integration, and compatibility services and training. However, in order to include all of the functionality that the Ohio Supreme Court requires, and to integrate the system with the city's existing server, the estimated cost of the project is now a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Judge Peggy Quinn applied for a grant from the Ohio Supreme Court, which was approved for the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. She's now asking council to increase the original appropriation by giving forty thousand dollars in order to accept the Supreme Court's grant and complete the entire project. Given this significant grant, this major project can now be completely, can be completed with eighty-four percent of the funding coming from the state and only sixteen percent of, from the Oakwood Court Fund. The other project involves city-owned land at the corner of Oakwood and Schenk Avenue. About a year ago, Oakwood resident Mary Montgomery approached the city on behalf of herself and a group of her neighbors to discuss the possibility of developing that parcel into a small pocket park with some playground equipment. These residents had the ideal to raise a significant portion of the money privately. Through discussions that ensued, city staff determined that the pocket park project might be eligible for grant funding from the Montgomery County Solid Waste District, and an application was filed. It qualified for the grant because major components of the improvement can be built using recycled materials. We were recently informed that the grant was approved in the amount of thirty-nine thousand and four dollars. This is a grant that requires local matching funds in the amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The city will pay the eighteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars with the understanding that Mary Montgomery will spearhead an effort to raise ten thousand dollars from private donations to reimburse the city. All told, this project park, project requires an additional appropriation of fifty thousand dollars. We are very appreciative of Mary's efforts, as well as her neighbors, who are willing to dedicate their time, effort, and resources to improving our community. In order for us to pursue both of these projects in two thousand and seventeen, as required by the terms of the two grants, council must adopt an amendment to the appropriation ordinance passed last December. This ordinance will appropriate an additional forty thousand from our Court Computerization Fund, an additional fifty thousand from our Capital Improvement Fund. At this point, I make a motion, under Section three point zero four of the City Charter, that this ordinance will take effect upon its passage, given time constraints of the two grants, and our interest in competing, completing these projects as soon as possible, I move that council waive the second reading and adopt this ordinance this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
And then, the next item is a resolution to accept a donation of property from Oakwood Investment Group, I will read that resolution. It relates to the Point-Oakwood Settlement Agreement that was approved by council on March twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, and adopted by the Montgomery County Common Police Court on March twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen. Pursuant to the settlement agreement, OIG and Hills developers have abandoned their plans to build condominiums at the intersection of Far Hills and West Shant Avenue, and OIG has replanted that area to create four single-family residential lots and a public green space. OIG is now donating the corner green space parcel to the city to be held in perpetuity as public green space. Our city attorney has received the deed from OIG's legal counsel, this resolution will formally accept the donation and authorize the city attorney to record the deed. I move that council adopt this resolution, and do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
And then next, we have a resolution to authorize certification of delinquent charges for cutting noxious weeds, Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor Duncan, resolution to authorize and direct the Director of Finance to certify certain delinquent charges for cutting noxious weeds to the county auditor for collection. Each year, the city incurs costs for mowing overgrown yards when owners do not take care of their property. The city bills property owners for those costs, and most of them do pay. For those who do not pay, this is our annual resolution to certify the costs to the county auditor, so they can be added to the tax bill for each property. The good news on this is that there are only six properties, and it adds up to a little bit over seventeen hundred dollars. So at this time, I move that council adopt this resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, any discussion for Councilmember Stevens? Hearing none, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
That concludes our legislation for this evening, we have a staff report from our Assistant City Manager Jay Weiskircher, and it's a very exciting report, I saw the preview.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, it's always a pleasure to have the opportunity to come before you and update you on some of the project that staff is working on. First off, I want to cover four areas tonight, development updates, we do have some projects that are in the pipeline, exciting projects that will start in due course this fall, so we'll talk a little bit about that, talk about property maintenance, the pocket park project that was just referred to by Vice Mayor Byington, and also some work we're doing on the Far Hills Avenue Business District Timber Wall. As part of the settlement agreement that was entered into between Hills, Oakwood Investment Group, and the neighbors in March of this year, provided for development of the five acres at the top of the hill next to Sugar Camp. Currently, that's designated for residential use, so that would require making an amendment to the master plan for an office building use. In that, in the settlement agreement, it provided that if an office building was built in that location, it would be no more than three stories high with access from Sugar Camp Circle. Interestingly, we were contacted recently by representatives of Russell Total Wealth Management, who have an interest in developing that particular parcel with a three-story building that would be between fifteen thousand and twenty thousand square feet, that would serve as their primary corporate offices, there would also be adequate space for some other tenants, and they have plans for a wellness center as well. This project is being fast-tracked by the folks at Russell Total Wealth Management, designs are currently underway, and they would like to come before the respective Planning Commission and City Council in the coming months, they would like to break ground yet this year. In terms of our review process, that would entail an amendment, as I previously mentioned, to the master plan, which currently designate this area for residential use, there would be a plan development review that would be in front of the Planning Commission, Planning Commission would then make a recommendation to you as City Council to approve or deny the plan development. So if they're successful in working through that process, again, they would like to get started on the project yet this year. Also, as part of the March settlement agreement, Hills withdrew their application to build the point, and those were the condo units at the corner of West Shant and Far Hills. As was just mentioned in the resolution that was passed, instead, that property was platted into four single-family lots, with the, the corner property, the, the middle parcel coming to the city for use as, as green space, there's about six tenths of an acre or so associated with that. As part and parcel of that agreement, then, Hills would move forward with development of the Trails condominium rental units at the bottom of the hill along Old River Trail, and you can see that right there on the site plan, that is the area designated as A. The condo rental units would then look out over Lane Stadium and the, the soccer fields. What you see in that particular site plan labeled as B is the five-acre parcel that we were just talking about, that would be the potential site for the Russell Total Wealth Management building. This next site plan shows the, the two condo rental buildings, again, facing the Old River Soccer Fields, would be very close to, to the street, with enclosed parking on the first floor of those buildings, and then additional parking, as you see there at the rear, up against the, the hillside. Next rendering is a elevation drawing, which is consistent with what was originally proposed a number of months ago. The developer is, is moving forward with plans, and hopefully, they're going to try and break ground either September or October, and they will build the, the two buildings concurrently, looking at probably about a fifteen-month construction schedule, so they would hope to wrap up in the winter or spring of two thousand and nineteen. In total, the project is valued at around seven million dollars. Hills will serve as the construction manager, and they will sub out the various trade work for this. Goodwill has an interest for a number of months in the former Petco Building at twenty-three, twenty-two Far Hills Avenue, they are very close to, to signing a lease on that property, and hope to do so by the end of this week. This is a very rough rendering of, of what the facade improvements might, might look like. You've probably noticed over the last couple of weeks, there's already some activity at the site, new parking lot is going in, there'll be new vegetation screening installed along the triangle front edge, most of the sidewalk in front of the building will be replaced, the building facade will be rehabbed, as will the entire interior of the building, so they will be doing this over the next several months, and the hope is that a new store will open sometime in October. Property maintenance update, we, and we talk about this every year, but I guess we can't stress it enough, we, we spend a lot of time on property maintenance, not only during the, the nice months of the year, but even in the wintertime, I mean, it's a, it's a constant, property maintenance zoning is something that we're always working on. Something that we do here, though, that's a little unique, and we can do it because being a smaller, compact community, we actually get in a car for about a week and just go up and down every street in the city, and we write down violations that we see. We then compile those violations, then we send out letters to the property owner advising them of the violation, and then giving them a tentative deadline for making repairs of, of the violations. In most instances, we work very closely with the property owners, a lot of people request extensions, have other things going on, so, you know, we try to do that. Our, our primary goal is just that the violations get repaired, and sometimes it takes a little longer than some neighbors would like, but we like to work cooperatively with our citizens, and if people are making a good faith effort, certainly, we will do that. This past June, we sent out about a hundred and eighty notices, how does that compare with what we typically do? Over the last six years, on average, we've sent out about two hundred and twenty notices every year. As you can see on this bar graph, there was a low of a hundred and thirty-seven notices in two thousand and thirteen, up to a high of three hundred and fifty in two thousand and fifteen. I really can't speak to why there were so many in, in two thousand and fifteen, but it's, it's one of those things that, you know, we get some complaints from citizens, but quite frankly, most of this is staff-generated, so we're out there plugging every day, the safety department helps us as well, so it's, it's really kind of a team effort when it comes to, to property maintenance and, and zoning. As was also mentioned under the appropriation ordinance, we've been doing some work with the neighborhood down at Skank and Oakwood Avenue, several neighbors approached us about a year ago, wanted to know if we could possibly convert the, the green space, which is very passive green space, in fact, it's a little hard to see in this picture, but there's one bench there right now, it's pretty much just grass and trees, but there's been an influx of younger children in that particular neighborhood, there really isn't a city park that's within closed walking distance, so the neighbors inquired as to whether the city would consider making that a more active park use. We worked with those neighbors over the past six or seven months, by coincidence, we had this opportunity to get some money through Montgomery County, through their recycling grant program, we applied for a grant, and we received the most money that they awarded this year, a little bit over thirty-nine thousand dollars. Part of the conditions of their grant were that all the park amenities, all the equipment there would primarily be made of recycled products, so that's the direction that we're, we're headed with this. As was also mentioned, the city has to match thirty percent of the grant funding, and then council challenged the neighbors to raise an additional ten thousand dollars, and I know the neighbors are working on that right now, so we've had good interactions with the neighbors, I think most people are pleased with, with where we're at on this. As you know, for the area, there's, it's only about three tenths of an acre, so there's not a lot of space, we're not going to be able to do anything grand like we did at Orchard Lake Park, or even some of the nice things we have at, at Schaefer Park, but we will be able to do some things that'll hopefully be fun for the kids down, down there. We're using Eric Sauer, Eric was born and raised in Oakwood, he worked with us on the Orchard Lake Park Plan, so very familiar with the community, and very well respected in the area of park development. This past Friday, we sent out about ninety-five letters to the neighborhood, obviously, they're aware of what's going on, but we just wanted to invite them for an informational meeting that we have scheduled here at the city building on Wednesday, July twenty-sixth. Hopefully, if everything goes according to plan, this is another project that will get started in the late summer or early fall. It's important that we try to use the grant money yet this year. And finally, Norv and I talk and laugh about this all the time, but it's hard to believe that that timber wall up in the business district has been there for a little more than forty-five, five years now, and most of it is original. There's obviously been some replacement work that's been done over the years with vehicular accidents, but for the most part, what you see up there has been in the ground for the last forty-five years. We are blessed in our Public Works Department to have a number of talented people who are now working on the, the rehab, which includes replacing rotted wood, warped wood, doing some crack filling, sanding, and then they'll apply a fresh coat of paint to the wall, and hopefully, that'll carry us through another four or five years till we probably have to do some additional work, but we've kind of been in that process right now for the past ten or fifteen years, and we're trying to make the wall go as, as long as we can. We got a lot of positive feedback from, from people up there, they feel safe with the wall, obviously, it has taken some hits over the years with vehicular accidents, but I can assure you that the wall has never lost. The wall stays in place, there's about four or five feet of it that's buried that you don't even see, so it's very secure, and I think people feel, feel good about that, and someday, when it is replaced, we'll obviously have to go in there with, with something that might be, be similar and, and provide the public some added protection. So, we started with this about a week ago, and the guys will continue working on this on a block-by-block basis, hopefully, if Mother Nature cooperates, we'll be able to finish up by the, by the end of August. That's all I have, certainly, my presentation was not as interesting as the one on, on opioid, opioids, but that's just some things that we've been doing over the past several months, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I disagree with that, I enjoyed that one better than the other. The sheriff, you know, was excitable. It was a little depressing. I liked yours better, Jay. Thank you.
You have more good news to report than me did.
Any other questions for Jay?
I have one, Jay. I recently had three Subarus full of stuff to give away, and my brother and I were looking for a place that's open on a Sunday, and I noticed Goodwill's website makes a huge distinction between the retail space or a drop-off center, and this is, the one that's coming is truly just a store. Is that correct?
At the Goodwill store?
Yeah, it's not a drop-off center as well?
There will be, during regular business hours, there will be an area where people can drop things off. There'll be somebody there to assist them, but no, this will not be one where somebody can drive up at midnight and drop off materials.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Other questions? All right. When the timber wall needs to be totally replaced, we look forward to you being in charge of that project.
That's why Norv and I talk about this all the time. Neither one of us want anything to do with that.
All right. Very good. Well, thank you very much for your report. It is now time for our City Manager's Report.
Yeah, Your Honor, yeah, the problem with that wall is the cost to rebuild something that is substantial like that, that will not only, you know, keep the snow from flying when you're plowing, you know, the main line into the shopping areas and all that, but in fact, stop vehicles like this thing does. I mean, they're astronomical, and we, some, I don't know, fifteen years ago plus, we had a landscape architectural firm take a look at that and did some rough kind of estimating, and I won't even share tonight what those numbers were, but they were big.
But they were seven figures or eight figures, correct?
Yeah, okay, so two to three million in that range back then, and I think there were maybe three or four different concepts developed, but it's just a real big price tag. But as Jay pointed out very well, I mean, that thing was built to stay, and we did some kind of crafty kind of maintenance rehab things over the years that addressed issues that were real big problems years ago. For instance, the cap that you see on top, the two-by-eight or whatever it is, was not there originally. Those vertical posts just simply came up, and the centers were rotting, but as you looked at the outside wood, it was still very solid. And so, you know, at some point years ago now, we put that top on, and that's held up very well, so we're going to keep maintaining it, and I think, again, as Jay pointed out, the appearance of it, the look and all that fits well within our district. It just doesn't look outdated. That lighter kind of gray color you see now that we applied, again, probably fifteen years ago, plus or minus, over the old, original dark brown, made a big difference. And I think probably in the eyes of some people, you know, it looked like we put a new wall in. Just a few other quick comments. I guess while we're in the business district, our Water and Sewer Department is engaged in some water, underground waterline work right now on the west side around Peach Orchard and also where Hillview runs into, or Hilltop runs into Far Hills. So there'll be construction there for probably about another week in that area, and our new Water and Sewer Foreman is getting his hands dirty there, meeting our business owners, keeping them informed of the work, because it does impact a little bit, you know, access to their businesses. And speaking of, this new foreman, his name is Chris Harold. You will meet him when he's introduced here at a council meeting on August 21st, and that'll be a time for us to introduce him, in effect, to the community as well. So he started here a few weeks ago and is doing a very nice job. Quickly, on the Shore Road project, we kind of touched on it. You know, you need to just drive the road to know that we're really under major construction now, and this will continue for about the next three months. And for the barrels that you see out there will be shifted around, you know, based on the activity of the day, but for the most part, most of the time, there will just be a single lane maintained in each direction, and that will, that in fact, will be the condition with only one exception, when there'll be a total road closure. I'll talk about this more at the next council meeting, as it won't occur until sometime in September, but that'll be to put in the final center median on the far north end of the project. But for now, we have the work zone established. Our Safety Department has been out there, as was mentioned earlier, on a regular basis. We've written a number of warnings on the speed, which, as you know, was reduced to 25 miles an hour. It's feeling more appropriate to drive that slower speed as you have run into the cones and all the construction activities, so we're doing a good job enforcing that. I mentioned earlier the speed board. We borrowed that from the city of Centerville Police Department, no cost, and we'll have it for a few weeks, and it is set up on the north and south streets of Delane, Hathaway, Acorn, and we might even move it over to Schaefer. And it basically alerts drivers if they're, you know, driving faster than 25 miles an hour. So it's basically dark, but if you're going faster than 25, it lights up and lets you know that. So it's just out there as a, I guess, reminder to our citizens to keep the speeds down. The actual work taking place now is, you know, catch basin repair, major pavement joint repair, some curb work on the outside perimeter of the roadways, a little bit of sidewalk work, some of the wheelchair ramps at the intersections. Now, that, all that kind of work is happening, and will continue for the next probably four to six weeks or so, and then the construction of these sixteen center medians will begin. That'll start on the far south end and work its way north. And then when that's done, we'll talk about the milling off of the asphalt surface and the final repaving, and in between all that, the new crosswalks will be built, you know, one between Wonderland Orchard, one between Telford and Aberdeen, and then the rebuilding of the bikeway crossing at the far north end by the Tudor Salon. So it's in full swing, and we look forward to a great final end product when that's done. The 2017 sidewalk curb and driveway apron program on the west side of Oakwood is almost completed, should be done the next couple of weeks, so that's went well. And as I mentioned at our last council meeting, we started a new program for educating our citizens, property owners, on, you know, the placement of yard debris or green waste out by the street for pickup, that that should go behind the curb and not actually in the street. And we've passed out roughly thirty door hanger notices to our citizens when we found violations, and all but two responded within the 72-hour period. So up to date, we've only had to do two pickups, and when we do that, of course, we count that as a special pickup against that property. After two of those, the third one comes with a hundred-dollar fee to it. But I fully expect that, you know, as we keep, you know, the educational campaign going, more and more people will understand, you know, what we need done here and why, and I don't see us having to do very many pickups on an ongoing basis, you know, as we move forward. And then finally, we're also, through our Public Works Department and with oversight from our horticulturist, Brian Caldwell, doing a lot of tree trimming around town, and we're now kind of in the Hatcher's Platt area. We worked kind of the northeast part of Oakwood earlier in the year. Now we're in the Hatcher's Platt area northwest corner, and we're working our way south. We're putting notices out when we cut folks' trees out on the frontage, and the degree to which property owners can trim their own trees, why that helps us and, you know, keeps our costs down, but in any case, that's underway, and it's, you know, of course, done for the most part for safety reasons. So that's all I have.
Any questions for our City Manager? I'm assuming that we've increased police patrols on Delane and Hathaway?
That we have.
All right. I appreciate you doing that. That is, I don't think I have any other questions for you regarding that, so thank you for your report. It's now time for council comments. Councilmember Hilton?
I have no comments this evening, Your Honor.
Councilmember Stevens?
The first thing I'd like to do is welcome Casey, our new PSO, to the Oakwood force. I've heard great things about her and look forward to seeing her on our streets protecting our citizens. I'd like to remind everyone that school starts August 15th. It'll be here before we know it, and good luck to the...
That early?
August 15th, yeah. And good luck to, you know, not only all the students, but the administrators and staff, and hope they have a wonderful school year. I'd like to thank Jay for that thorough report. I always like to get that report and see what's going on, clarify rumors that are out there about what's going on with development in the city, and, you know, it's a positive report. Those are all positive things that are going on, and I look forward to all those, you know, buildings being constructed and all the repairs being made. And then finally, I'd like to thank Sheriff Plummer and Sheriff Shrek. I've listened to Sheriff Plummer in the past at different events, and he always, you know, what I like about him is he tells it like it is, and, you know, unfortunately, it's a terrible topic, but I like his compassion for it, and he wants to try to fix the problem. You know, it's good to know that we have a sheriff in place that, you know, really cares about it, because this is not the first time I've heard him speak about this. As we all know, it's a terrible subject, but, you know, if we all get together, we can hopefully make some strides to fix this problem. So I'll thank him for coming tonight, spending the time with us, and educating us on some of the issues they're having, or technically, I should say that we're all having, is what I should say. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Vice Mayor Byington?
No comments.
Thank you. To amplify Jay's report on our business district, I have anecdotal evidence that my encouraging Oakwood residents to buy more ice cream at Grater's is working. We still need to continue to buy more ice cream at Grater's, you know, so we can outperform Centerville and Beaver Creek, and I know that Oakwood residents will accept this challenge. I know I have. But in addition to that, hot off the last issue of the Oakwood Register, was we have a new owner of Blue Turtle Toys, and it is, her name is Kathy Topanga. She took over the management on July 1st and is busy restocking the shop's shelves with new inventory. She is proud to carry on the tradition of a community toy store, and the shop will continue to maintain its established hours in the city of Oakwood. So I would encourage residents to pop in and buy toys, but if you don't want to buy toys, just thank her for being a member of our thriving business district. And then where the Park Avenue Antiques Store is, they are going to have a new tenant starting the 1st of August. It is the Toasty Barker Boutique, which right now is across the street, and they have outgrown their space, and they are moving to where Blue Turtle, not Blue Turtle, they're moving to where Park Avenue Antiques is, and I would definitely encourage you to buy the vintage items and handmade crafts that she sells out of her store, because the owner of that establishment is my daughter. So I don't believe I'm violating the ethics rules by encouraging people to buy product from my daughter. So, and, yes, that's my point. And in addition, the, I've talked with the owner of the Goodwill Store, or the former Complete Met Store owner that's now going to be a Goodwill Store, and, you know, that picture does not do justice to what he's, he's going to really upgrade the exterior facade of that and turn it back into sort of an art deco decor, which is what it was back in the day. So, and he's taking a lot of money to really upgrade that parking lot and the surrounding area. So it's my understanding that Dayton Daily News will in fact do a follow-up article. Hopefully, that will be better than the demise of Oakwood downtown retail. I think we've got to come back, and it happened in all of about ninety days, so we're excited about that. The other thing I'd like to point out is Wright Memorial Library received a $250,000 grant from the Eichelberger Foundation, so this is a significant grant that's going to allow them to make some needed improvements to the building and interior, and so we congratulate, you know, them on that effort, and I think that'll be another great opportunity for improvement of our fine Wright Memorial Library. And then Norv and I and Ann had the opportunity on July 4th to attend the rededication of the Hollinger Memorial Tennis Courts, Hollinger, Hollinger Memorial Tennis Courts. It's their 70th anniversary from when it was founded, and now it is a joint effort from their group and the City of Oakwood Leisure Service Department. So anyone who joins our Oakwood Leisure or Community Center can spend a small fee, and they have the opportunity to play on clay courts, and after watching Feder, you know, thrash his opponent, I think we need to learn more how to play on clay, so, although they play on grass, I think it is.
That was one thing, and that was grass.
Yes, the French opens clay, correct?
Right.
All right, so, and then the other thing that we've noticed is, you know, the property revaluations are coming out from the county auditor, and this is one of the good news, bad news deals, is, you know, over 80% of Oakwood residences that have been selling for the last two years have been selling above the appraised value that the county has, and what we're finding is Oakwood has the highest average resale value in the entire county. So that's a testament to the fact that a lot of the value that fell, you know, during the Great Recession of 2008 and '09 has come back. I think people recognize the value of Oakwood living and the amenities that we offer and the great school system and Wright Memorial Library we have, and I think that's reflected in property values in Oakwood. So that's another bit of good news. And with that, I will say that our next annual, our next annual, our next monthly meeting of Oakwood Council is going to be on Monday, August 21st, 2017, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.